Yeah.
Okay. Welcome to our meeting, everyone. It is Thursday, June seventeenth, and we are at the boardroom on Legacy Campus, and thank you all for coming. All six of you. Oh, no. Probably Clayton is not here for the meeting. We will have our roll call.
Larry Jepson, board member.
Randall Bagley, board member.
Steve Norton, superintendent.
Terry Rhodes, board member.
Kathy Christensen, board member.
Dale Hanson, business administrator.
And Roger Pulsofer, Chris Corcoran, and Jeff Nielsen are excused. And if you would all stand, I will lead the pledge on the mission stage.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our mission is to educate students for success in a changing world. And we'll wait for Dale to tell us which public are inputting tonight. All right. Thank you very much for checking on that. Uh, we'll move on to the consent agenda, and I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second it.
All in favor will vote when Dale catches up to us.
I actually, my computer went crazy on me for a second, but I'm back.
Because you left.
Okay, we'll get over here. Okay, so motion was by Larry?
Kathy. Kathy made the motion.
Okay, and seconded by Larry.
Mm-hmm.
It didn't show up on my screen, Dale.
Oh, there it is. Just got there.
Yep, all the votes are in and unanimously in favor of the motion.
Thank you very much. Moving on to our action agenda, the first item is a request for approval of the 2021-22 employee agreements with C.A.S.H., with C.E.A., C.A.S.H. Educational Support Professionals and Administrators Association. Anyone have questions about these or comments? Kirk, do you have any comments?
No, I'm here to answer questions if you have any.
Okay. If not, I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the 2021-22 employee agreement with the C.A.S.H. Education Association, C.A.S.H. Education Support Professional Association, and Administrators Association.
I second it.
All in favor?
Okay, all the votes are in and unanimously in favor of the motion.
Thank you. Second on the agenda, on the action agenda, is a request for approval of the learner-validated attendance policy. Any questions? Presented by Kurt? And he's not here.
He must be busy.
Any questions there?
Um, I do have a question, so once we approve this policy, then does that, that means that we have the flexibility, we have flexibility with the 998-180 rule, right?
It's nothing related to that. We're not an online situation.
Well,
we're not looking for more flexibility on the other end.
Okay, but the legislature in their special session said that, or part of, part of one of the bills said that if, that anyone who wanted that flexibility had to create this policy. Okay. So it won't change anything we're doing, it just creates the policy.
Yep.
Okay. All right, I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the learner-validated attendance policy.
I second it.
All in favor?
Okay, all the votes are in and unanimously in favor of the motion.
Thanks very much. And next, we have a request for approval of the Secondary Comprehensive Guidance Program. Any questions, comments, concerns? Thanks for adding that, Mike, uh, the presentation to the board from last meeting. I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the Secondary Comprehensive Guidance Program.
I second it.
All in favor?
And all the votes are in and unanimously in favor of the motion.
Thank you. Oh, our favorite part. Next, we have a request for approval of the final legal budget. Did you want to say something about that?
I could say something quickly. Uh, so from what we presented last time, there was one change that we, we made in there. One was with the, the the payment of the, the lease requirement we have for Johnson Controls projects. The funding for Phase Two of that, the way it was set up, it it appeared that it was, we had a lease payment on one side, and then we were going to contribute $500,000 a year to also help with the, the projects, because there was a lot of the costs were outside of just the utility savings that were generated there. So we had $500,000 from a year ago's budget that carried over to this year that we anticipated, we had a million that they were going to bill us for, and so I called Scott Reese and said, "Scott, when are you going to bill me for this million dollars that I owe you?" And he said, "Let me get back and check." He called back and says, "No, the way it's set up is really, that's intended that we would can, we would transfer $500,000 from the Capital Outlay Fund over to the general fund." And then the regular, uh, lease payment that we have is all the payment that we make, not an additional $500,000 a year, so.
Oh.
So that really, it helped us, it helps us in the general fund that where we had anticipated another million-dollar payment that was supposed to come out this year, uh, doesn't have to come out, so that's going to give us a, a million-dollar extra carryover this year than we would have had. And also, when we're talking about next year's budget, uh, that also freed up another $500,000 in the general fund, because we wouldn't have that additional payment that was going to be required, so. Uh, it doesn't help the Capital Outlay Fund, which would have been nice, but it, uh, it does help the general fund, so.
Awesome.
So that's built in the final legal budget that's
Excellent.
there online for you.
Thank you. I will take a motion.
I move that we approve the final legal budget for 2020 to 2021.
I second it.
All in favor?
Okay, all the votes are in and unanimously in favor of the motion.
Excellent. And now, we are to the most important part of this meeting. The request for approval of the proposed budget for the 2021-2022 school year. Any questions?
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
We were waiting to get the, the final basic rate set by the State Tax Commission and the State School Board, and I called them, said, "Oh, it'll be, you'll get it by the 22nd, but probably not before." And, uh, but I got a call this morning from the county auditor, Diana Schaefer, down uh, the county office, and told me they had actually completed the, and calculated the basic rate, so we have the final tax rate that we'll propose to be approved tonight.
So it's in here, in here, and we don't have to amend later?
Correct.
Awesome.
Yeah, so we got that just this morning. It changed everything but about six pages on that whole booklet for that one number, what I had to change, but, uh, it, it's interesting. The basic rate came in a lot higher than I thought it would be.
I'll pay it, John.
It's actually higher than, than the basic rate was this year, even though the assessed value of properties gone way up. So if you look in your booklet, just, just before the second blue page, there's a marker there. There's a summary that's, it shows a property tax comparison.
Page fourteen?
Uh, it's not numbered.
Oh.
Oh, yes, it's in that next, that section you're just coming into, it's in the back of that section.
Okay. So the last section under property taxes?
Yes, yeah, the very last page of that section.
Property tax.
Okay.
So this, this looks at comparing this current year's taxes, their tax rate, the total dollars it generated, and then what we're proposing for next year's tax rate and the dollars it would generate, so on the basic levy, which is the very first line, this past year, the rate was a double oh sixteen twenty-eight, and it's actually going to go up to a sixteen sixty-one uh, for next year. That's going to generate over $2 million of additional taxes here in the county that we'll levy. It won't generate any additional revenue for us, because that'll just mean getting more property tax, we'll get less state subsidy. But the other increase we have is down at, uh, uh, that's right, we're right at the very bottom.
Debt service.
The debt service. The rate actually goes up just a little bit from what we had last year, we had a 2402 rate, and this year, it's a 2411. But that's going to generate almost $2.7 million of additional taxes that we'll have, and so those two alone are, it shows a five-and-a-half-million-dollar property tax increase that we'll we'll realize, so part of that is, is due to the legislature setting the basic rate on what they require to generate. We have no control on that. The debt service increase was, was part of that savings, where we had almost $11 million of savings that are being generated, but it did move forward some of that debt, uh, which which did dry the rate up. We had really anticipated that rate would hold at a double oh two-six, and it dropped, cut it down to double oh two-four, just because of that increased property tax rate, or the valuation. They also did adjust the, the assessed value for, for us from the numbers we had last time. So we, we had that we were going to have about a 20% increase in assessed value. It did come down to about seventeen-and-a-half percent. And the new growth was over 400 million um, in the first numbers we had, now it's down just at 301 million. Um, so they had to adjust some numbers, and that did affect some of the, the amounts we would receive on these property taxes, so that the new growth is where we actually got additional money in a lot of those levies. Um, and so that's not going to be quite as much as we had had hoped, as we had with the numbers they gave us last, or two weeks ago. So that's, that's really, that'd be, the, the total tax rate is, is a point zero zero six eight four one. And, uh, if you look at the third page there in the property tax section, you can see the last six years, well, the last five years, tax rates. Five years ago, we were at double oh eighty-one ninety-one, then it dropped to eighty-one thirty-eight, then to seventy-eight thirty-six, thirty-nine, seventy-seven thirty-three, and this year, it was seventy-one forty-four. Next year, it'll be sixty-eight forty-one, so that rate has continually come down. But, I could just show you two, because I know we talked about this last time, Kathy, is that third-to-last page in there, it, it tries to compare what a, an average home would pay in taxes with, uh, with this tax rate. And so that one shows a property tax levy comparison. Shows that the average home value here in the county is 379,482 dollars. And the, the benefit we have with residential property is we're only taxed at 55% of, of the fair market value of that property.
Is that average or median?
That's average. Yeah. And so we get a 45% reduction in property taxes for residential property in that sense, that we're only taxed at 55% of the fair market value. So a home valued at 379,000, last year would have paid 1,491 dollars. This next year, they'll pay 1,427 dollars, so it's actually a $63 reduction. But that's only if their value of their home reported last year will be the same as what they will have to pay on this year. Uh, businesses are, are taxed at 100% of the fair market value of their property. So last year, they would have paid 2711, and this next year, they'll pay 2596, so they get almost a $115 reduction if their value's the same, so. That's
Thank you.
Nice to be in a growing district, in a growing area. Much better than
When we're not trying to buy a house.
Yeah.
Um, did you listen in to JLC, the JLC meeting last week?
No.
Um, so USBA is talking about, as part of the legislative priorities, um, for USBA for the next legislative session in 2022, to, um, push again for the automatic inflation rate adjustment to the property tax rate, to the basic levy. Um, how do you feel about that?
I know we do get a little inflationary adjustment now with the voted leeway, with some of the legislation that was approved two years ago. So we do get some of that benefit. I think if we were to hold the rate constant, this year would really hurt a lot of people. But I think this year kind of maybe brings into focus a little better perhaps why we, we don't just keep us a constant tax rate, because if property values are going to keep raising the way they are, people's income are not increasing at that same rate, but their taxes would increase that much faster. So I, I think there should be some type of inflationary adjustment in there, but as far as holding the property tax rate constant every year, I don't think there's any way we'd get that through the legislature.
Even with as, um, as, uh, in favor of more local investment, more local, um, participation in taxes as they are?
Well, that's, that's the one argument that, that's out there, is that it's, the system right now is too heavily in favor of, of state funding coming from just income tax. So I, I think it would have a shot, it, it would be voted on differently depending on the mindset of the individual voting.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks for that. I will take a motion to approve the proposed budget for 2021-22 school year.
I move that we approve the proposed budget for the 2021-22 school year.
I second it.
All in favor?
Okay, all the votes are in and unanimously in favor of the motion.
Thank you.
Another one in the, in the books, Dale.
Awesome.
Nice job.
Nice work. Moving on, the last, uh, action item we have on the agenda tonight is the school board meeting schedule for 21-22. Um, does anyone have, uh, questions about that? I did have, um, uh, Carolyn change the Septen, the second meeting in September. Thanks for reminding us about that, Randall, that the, uh, USBA leader, uh, Leadership Academy is the second week, so. Um, if you, if you don't see anything else, then I, that we need to change, I think we're ready to approve this. And I will take a motion.
I move that we approve the, uh, school board meeting schedule for the 2021-22 school year.
I second it.
All in favor?
Okay, all the votes are in and unanimously in favor of the motion.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to the reports agenda, we have Mike and Tim here to present the TSSA plans, or they did already, online. Has anyone looked at them? I've looked, that's it, okay. I did a
I haven't yet.
I did a tim last night, I was just going to scan them real quick, and then I started reading them, and I couldn't not comment. Yeah, so then I worked on it for a long time. Because then I read it again, and then I commented again, and but I think it's done. My part. Anything else you need us to know about that? The TSSA plans?
It's mainly an item, just to see if you have any questions at all.
Okay.
I will probably not have mine done till, um, after the 26th of June, because I'm going to be gone. And I'm not pushing myself to get that done before I go.
What would be the next action meeting you have?
On the 15th.
We only have one in July, so it must be the 15th, okay? All right. Okay. Uh, monthly financial report, Dale. The last one.
Yeah, this financial report is for the period ending May 31st. And I can't read any of these numbers without my eyes on. Anyway, um, so this, now this report doesn't reflect the final legal budget yet, so that adjustment for the, the lease payment doesn't reflect in here yet, it, it will be in the June monthly report.
Okay.
But, uh, really, if you go to the detail report, I'm just happy to say, district's going to be left in good financial position when we leave. You know, as you go through there, again, we're looking mostly at salaries and benefit budgets. And I, I think there's all but one location there where this year's budget is actually the amount spent is less, a lesser percentage of the budget than the amount we had spent this same time a year ago, comparison to the total expenditures for that year. And, uh, so it means that our budget is strong, we're within budget, we're actually under budget, um, with what we've expended in those cases. Utilities are actually 10% lower uh, as a comparison of total budget than they were a year ago, so those are, those are positive, and that's actually after having lowered the utility budgets some to compensate for the lease payment, uh, because we were supposed to realize, uh, lease, or utility savings to generate funding for the lease payment. And
Do you think that, um, the 10% reduction is entirely due to the Johnson Controls project?
I can't say it's completely. But I think for the biggest part, uh, electricity is the one that, these savings, most of it's been lighting retrofits, and that, that gives you immediate savings from day one. The solar energy at Lewiston and, and Summit, I know when they first fired that up, they had a fire at Summit, so they shut it all down. So we've had very little time to recognize much savings there, but, uh,
But it is producing the amount of electricity, they said it would, and, and pretty much covers those two buildings' energy needs, and with some sale back to the comp, company.
Yeah.
For top power.
So that's, that's all working fine, but, uh, really, all in all, everything here, I think, is, is just very positive. I don't have anything negative there I can point out, I believe. School Lunch is, School Lunch actually got a, a letter this week showing that the carryover they had last year is, is above and beyond a, a three-month limit as to how much you can carry over from one year to the next. And it was over by like 61,000 or something like that. And so they have to put together a, a spending plan as to how they're going to spend that down, either purchasing new equipment.
I was going to say new equipment, eat that up quickly.
Or serving steak and lobster. And they're going to have the same issue, I think, for next year, because the carryover I believe they'll have this year will probably exceed that three-month limit, too, but, uh, so they're, they're in a very strong position. It's been one of the blessings, I think, of COVID, for the School Lunch program, it's worked out well.
Yeah, it has.
Anyway.
Anything else?
Nope.
All right. Thank you very much. Board member reports. Uh, Jeff reported that he was still working with, um, Richard Stowell to get, um, information from the board evaluation and the superintendent evaluation, so he didn't have numbers on, or he didn't have data from that yet. Um, do any of you have reports? I don't. Okay. I could report that I attended the JLC meeting last week.
Nah, I didn't have a chance to tune in, so is there anything that we need to?
There were only 10 people there in the room, all the rest were online, so. No, it was interesting because, uh, it seems like, uh, the people who were there were having a hard time coming up with new asks to the legislature. Besides just increasing the WPU, and, um, because every district is so different with how with, with their needs and what they would do with increase, nobody wants to pigeon, nobody wants to pigeonhole any of the money. So really, so the general consensus was that, that, that's still the best way for all 41 districts to be, um, to be most benefited by anything from the legislature, is if they put more money in the WPU. So we can each use it how we need to individually.
I think you'll still see some more equalization come out of the legislature, but it won't come out of the school boards.
Yeah. Yeah. Anyway, that was at, it was at Nebo instead of in Sandy, so it was a longer drive.
Yeah.
But oh, well. And their boardroom is like twice as big as ours.
Yeah, it's, it is big. Size doesn't matter in everything, so.
Well, they have more than twice as many kids. So we have a very large boardroom for our, for our district. Board president report, I just Board president report, I just want to express our thanks to Dale. This is his last meeting as officially as the business administrator, and we so appreciate that 30 years you have given to making sure that the CASH school district is fiscally sound, and you've done a fantastic job.
Amen.
We appreciate it. Not the last time you'll see him, however, because he's, he'll be training for the next several months, our new business administrator, who, um, sent me a text this week and said he did find a house. They have one under contract in Richmond, but it's not available until October. So they'll be living in an apartment in North Logan until then.
Yeah.
So, um, and he expressed gratitude for the, um, moving stipend that we sent him, authorized him, because, and, yeah, it'll be a challenge to move twice in a few months. But, um, uh, he said his, their house in Huntington, um, already is under contract also, so there, it seems like things are working out well for him, and he plans to start on July 5th, is that right?
Yeah, it's, whatever.
Oh, the 5th is a holiday, right, and so it'll be the 6th?
He'd already asked if he could come in on the 6th, but the holiday was changed for our people anyway, so it works just perfect, yeah.
Yeah. He said he had visited with you about that, he wanted a few days after the 30th of June to settle in, so.
Get you his breath.
That was, that was good, so he'll start on the 6th, then we'll see him here in the boardroom on the 15th, and we'll have a party that night after our meeting. So, that's all of my president report. Oh, Carolyn took you off.
Yeah, I don't have anything either, other than been fun writing, uh, tandem with that guy, and, uh, when he finally does set a time when he actually might officially walk out, we'll have a big party. Big party. Not because he's walking.
You missed the board presentation to him last meeting, meeting.
Oh, yeah, it was good.
So, did, did you take your bobble head to work, or did you leave it home? You should bring it, let Steve see it.
All right. Uh, we have reached the end of our, unless any of you want to speak. Okay, we've reached the end of our agenda, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you so much.